That I called the meeting to order at six P M. Can we get a roll call?
Hi, I'm.
This is to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands. One nation under God, in the middle of whatever he can justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Absolutely. We're sure him here. And sure, Sharky.
Here.
And share Reese.
Here.
And Commissioner Compass absent.
Do we have any reorder? I only have one item. And that takes us to approval of the minutes. Did anyone have any revisions with the minutes?
Oh, my.
Sorry.
I do, I do. On page seven, you got me down as. I praised the existing Buellton School District. What what I think I said was the Buellton School District has an excellent preschool program. Which is way the point because they were. All about preschool and kindergarten, so.
Absolutely, Koshir. I I just wanted to mention, we did get an email from a from the public with recommended changes to the minutes that I printed out for you and wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay.
I'm okay with the change to the comment where I've cited. First one. All others are fine as well.
I I the one about Amy Small is the only one I have an issue with. Because I think what she was expressing was that the traffic study included uses that didn't exist yet. Which, to an extent, that was reported in the comment. That Mr. De Fazio wrote down, because I think he wrote it, wrote, yeah, she wondered how an environmental impact study could be done on projects not yet in operation, but I think it was specifically the traffic study. Because she was talking about how the traffic study included the children's museum that didn't wasn't in a in place yet. So. Um, let's see. Uh, maybe we reframe that to say Amy Small resident stated how she's in there. Okay, like I noticed, she wondered how. An environmental impact study. And traffic. Study could be prepared for project elements not yet in operation, I think would.
Project elements not yet in operation, okay.
That's my comment.
At the chair, Chair Reese's discretion, sure.
Right. She was specific, Amy Smalls was specifically.
Use the mic. Okay, Amy Smalls was specifically wondering why. The children's museum wasn't included in that impact study being that. There's already been some activity and it's already projected in in another study.
The the study assumes full build out of the museum.
It does.
It's and it included analysis of the children's museum.
Right.
I thought you said it didn't include it last week, you said it you tend to care for it because it's not yet.
No, I said, we have to account for it, even though it's not built, we use. Institute for Traffic Engineering generations projections to do that study. Because we can't wait for a project to be built to analyze what kind of impact it'll have, we have to analyze it before the project is built.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Yeah, the the rest I. It makes sense to me, that was just the one that was like, oh, because it was a little bit confusing the back for us, so I'm glad we clarified. Devin, you got that.
Okay, so I guess just to clarify, so for the minutes. Um, if if this is the motion, just wanted to clarify what the changes have been, so Marcelo or Commissioner Sarkia had mentioned the changes to his quote on page seven of the minutes. Um, there's also the sheet that you have been provided regarding her recommend date recommended changes to the minutes. Again, with Chair Chair Reese's one change regarding. Um, the adding the traffic study reference as opposed to just. Um, the environment, all impacts, um, if is is that, does that cover everything at least? To allow you to make a motion?
I guess.
Yep.
As long as you say, as long as you got the preschool thing in there.
I'm impressed by the minute taking. So a lot of. Lot of things to summarize. All right, do we have a motion with those changes that?
I move to approve with the changes.
My second.
And for the approval of the minutes, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
As Chair Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Hi. All right. Okay, that takes us to public comments, so any members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission on matters that are not on today's agenda may do so at this time. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. And if you do have a public comment, please state your name and address for the record and we'll. Limit comments to three minutes. Do we have any comments for today for items not on the agenda?
I haven't received any speakers up now.
Great, thank you. Looks like nothing on the consent calendar, no continued public hearings. So to our new public hearing.
All right. I'm Adam Chairman, uh, dear woman, pardon me, member of the planning commission. Uh, the item before you this evening is a resolution. Uh, a draft resolution prepared for you to either recommend or not recommend approval of a draft ordinance to the city council. Uh, the ordinance to the city council, uh, or the ordinance for the city council will address the use of. Motel property hotel and motel properties primarily on Avenue of Flags that have been converted to long term residential uses. And with the effect of the ordinance being to require within a certain period of time, the conversion of those long term residential units back to short term motel units. The intent of this ordinance is to incentivize property owners to reinvest in those properties. To um, to allow. A revitalization of businesses and properties along the Avenue of Flags to assist in the overall revitalization of the avenue as a commercial corridor that's that's envisioned. As part of the Avenue of Flag specific plan. The um. The the hindrance to this revitalization has been the long term residential uses which have been in existence in those motels for many years. I don't know when that actually started. I I can only assume it was it was well over ten years ago, maybe maybe longer than twenty years. But somewhere along the line, um, those motel uses were were transitioned in violation of our municipal code into these long term residential uses. Somewhere along the line after that, uh, the state through legislative means and. A administrative interpretations of those legis pieces of legislation have deemed those long term residential uses to be permanent residential uses and therefore protected under law. Uh, both state law and cities municipal code requires the replacement of any. Uh, affordable housing units that are removed. So any of those units which were to be converted to back to motel units while there were residents still living in them or within, let's say nine, I think it was ninety days after. If a if a long term resident had lived in that unit within the last ninety days. Replacement of that unit would be required. Now typically, replacement would occur on site as part of a a future development, an example of this would be the. Uh, the Creekside Village project at the corner of Second Street and Avenue of Flags, there is an existing former motel, uh, now kind of an apartment building on site there. The housing units are relatively substandard. Uh, the the new project that has been approved there will be required as it rebuilds to replace nine of those units. Um, under our current municipal code. Uh, and those units must be preserved, excuse me, preserved as affordable housing units. The rest of the projects on the avenue, with the exception of the Red Rose Court motel. Uh, have been identified as recipients of replacement housing that the city has provided and the city has provided that. Uh, as part of the Polo Village project and has provided that through various incentives given to the Polo Village project to include some financial. A financial contribution to that particular project. With the replacement unit issue out of the way, the city is now able to move forward and. Require the conversion of those motel units. Now, we do have the problem of the the current residents of those motels and where they're going to go. When the Polo Village project was occupied, about fourteen families from Avenue of Flags moved into those units, which was a fair percentage of the. Of the number of families that actually exist or actually live in those motel units currently, um, or did at the time. Uh, we don't have an exact count, but five years ago, when we first did the count, uh, in preparation for the Polo Village project, it was estimated that there were up, I believe, about twenty nine family units.
That's what I recall.
So roughly half of the ones that were there previously have. Have been. Moved to Polo Village, the object here is to get this ordinance approved. Uh, we put the motel owners on notice, this is coming, so it's our hope that they're not actively trying to refill those units right now, because if this ordinance is approved. We will, um. You know, we'll have to deal with, uh, you know, finding new places to live for those folks. As it is the ordinance, as it's presented to you this evening, uh, for your consideration, will require the um. Conversion of those motel units back into motel units uh, by the end of this calendar year. Uh, exceptions can be made for individual units in the event that. Uh, the residents of those individual units have applied for and obtained a place on the waiting list for either of the two subsequent affordable housing projects which are coming down the pipeline. If that's the case, uh, if they wind up on, let's say they wind up on the the waiting list for. Uh, they're qualified and and waiting for those units to open. Those units will probably open in late spring, early summer of twenty twenty six, they would be allowed to remain in their existing unit until that point. It's only those residents that would not. Uh, that have not applied, have not qualified for one reason or other for those two units, uh, those two projects rather. Would be required to to leave those motels. Now, the owners of the motel units would be on the hook for things like relocation assistance and there's other other possible render assistance programs that that they as landlords would need to undertake. But that's relatively. Relatively speaking, that covers the intent of the ordinance, there's a little more to it, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions if you have it. Um, the object for the city here is to provide this opportunity for revital revitalization of the avenue while providing. A much more. Quality housing unit through these new projects than what they have in those units on the on the avenue currently. So I'll conclude my report right here, there's a lot wrapped up in this, but the ordinance itself is relatively simple, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, we'll go to the commission with any questions.
All right, so. The folks living in those units, they after all will be assisted into newer. Or. Upgraded housing. Uh, that was the main concern. When the that one project or on Second Street is what about the people that already live there?
Right.
You know. What can we do for them? So it's good to hear that 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 there is assistance.
In the in the case of the the residents on Second Street, the 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 property owner there is required to pay relocation assistance and there's probably some other programs as well. Uh, to aid those property owners, um, or excuse me, not the property owners, to aid the residents of those units moving forward. In the case of the motel residents we're referring to now, um, it is our hope that they will take advantage of the um, opportunity. To try and pre qualify for these two new projects coming online, of course, if they choose not to do that, they will be subject to. Their own moves, exactly, and we we did have some instances with the Polo Village project where. Uh, for in some cases, some of the residents chose not to take advantage of that, and in other cases, they were denied the advantage, uh, the opportunity to take advantage of that for one reason or another. We're trying to rectify that by working with the developers of the two new projects to uh, to try and get them to re authorize some of our residents here, but that we. There are certain ways to do that, and if we we step over lines there, we we violate fair housing laws, so we're all working with the attorneys to make sure we're we're on the right side of that line. Thank you.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay, let me start then. What are the some of the where the current hotels and motels are? What are those current those properties currently zoned as and do they need to remain as hotel motels after residents have been relocated?
They're currently, um, they're currently within the the Avenue Flag specific plan, it's all currently zoned C R. The ordinance requires them. To revert to only short term rental uses, no more long term residential rentals, but it doesn't require them to remain as motels. If the property owner decides, hey, I've got to spend too much money on this property and it wouldn't be viable for me to turn around and make it into a motel again, they wanted to do something else with it. That's entirely fine, as long as it meets the zoning and the specific plan requirements, what we're looking for is um. Reinvestment in the property to revitalize the the commercial. Uh, vitality of the avenue.
So, thank you, that explains that, yeah. So the properties could, after residents are out. The properties could be sold and a new person could develop it to be something else.
Absolutely.
I think that's.
Okay, uh, I'm just gonna go through these, some of them you've you've touched on already, so. The first was that I had was if the fourteen families have been relocated, how many are still living in these S R units that would potentially be displaced? And you said when you surveyed them about five years ago, it was twenty nine and about half of those have been relocated, but we don't know how many units have been reoccupied.
No, I don't know if any have been reoccupied, when we started this, we started this process of developing this ordinance was back in in, well, it. This has been a five year process for me that I've been working to make sure I can get everything lined up to do this. But last October, I sent a a letter to each of the motel owners on the Avenue of Flags, with the exception of Red Rose Court, advising them of the. The the impending consideration of this ordinance, we hadn't drafted it at this point, but I let them know this is what we're looking at, here's likely what's going to be proposed. Um, and, you know, I actually talked to a couple of them, they were not terribly concerned. Uh, the two that I didn't talk to, I don't know what their feelings are, but I sent them another letter. Ten days ago.
Okay.
And so, um, again, we've heard no response from that. Uh, it's difficult to tell of the original twenty nine, we've moved fourteen into Polo Village, there's no telling how many or how many were there before the Polo Village folks moved out, because. I won't say they all high turnover units, but there is some turnover over a few years, so we could have different family mixes. You know, and then and then again, as they moved out, it's entirely possible that the landlord put new residents in there.
Yeah, one of the questions I had when reading through the report is, you know. What were the the types of reasons that people weren't able to move into Polo Village or opted not to and was it like related to qualifying income or? Waitlist, people on the waitlist ranking higher and there being fair housing issues?
That I'm sure there was a lot of that, uh, uh, there were a variety of reasons, again, some of the um. Some of the. Residents were single occupants and by the time this had happened, the the. The way the financing works for these project, you're you're aware, but for the benefit of everyone else, the the way these projects work is they have to cobble together financing from different programs. Uh, some of them focus specifically on single persons, uh, and so this these single bedroom units. Or this, the Polo Village project were all filled with those recipients before any of the families got to move out. So that's, that was a big hindrance there, um, the same, we're we're looking at the similar situation with the um. With the the Carrillo Senior Project, these are all seniors, but again, a lot of the one bedroom uh, units are spoken for, most of them are one bedroom, but there is some. Uh, there is some uh. Capacity left to fill and then the the eighty nine units within the Beelton Garden Apartments is another mix of uh, of unit types.
Okay. Do we know what? Do we know what waiting lists? These different, the three different projects are using, like, are they using the Housing Authorities List as a basis? Do they have project-specific waitlist?
So the Polo Village uh was using Housing Authority waitlist. Um, the Cabrillo Senior Project is. Is working with the Housing Authority, but I believe they're setting up their own waitlist and then I know that um. Beelton Garden Apartments is is people's self-help housing and they have their own program for establishing a waitlist. But they have, uh, Cabrillo has indicated a willingness to work with us and we have a meeting set up with. Uh, the executives of people's self-help housing in the next couple of weeks to have that same discussion.
Okay, thank you. And do we know? It is Polo Village fully occupied at this point? Do we know?
It is fully rented. I believe everyone has moved in at this point.
Okay. Um, and then. I was curious, do we have an idea of um? It, the income levels of people that are remaining in these SRO units and whether they're likely to to qualify for spots in deed-restricted units?
It it's it's hard to say. We don't have the ability to know what those income levels are in a lot, in a lot of cases. I would, I would imagine in all the cases, the landlords aren't asking them. They're simply giving them rent to pay and they pay it. But I would venture to to guess that a large percentage of them would fall within, at the very least, our low-income range, if not the very low-income range.
Right, okay, and then I would, um, I was curious. We might not have any data on this, but what the idea of the rents for that the SRO tenants currently pay. Um, versus the rents that they would be subject to in affordable units where the the rent is capped?
We don't know because um, you know, there there, a lot of them aren't telling us, but we have heard a couple people tell us what they've made and what they're, or which, excuse me, what they're paying. And what they're paying is generally in line with, if not a little bit more than what they would be paying. Under a uh, under a low-income uh project and certainly if they qualified for the very low income, they'd be paying even less than that.
Right, okay. Um, and then the other questions I have are kind of about the. The units and the two new projects, so. Um, I know they, I think they both have issued building permits.
Yes, they are both under construction.
Okay, and do we have a? An idea of when they might be receiving occupancy clearance?
I think Cabrillo is looking for something toward the end of the year. And uh Beelton Garden Apartments is looking for something in the late spring, early summer of next year.
Okay, yeah, you just, I had some questions about potentially tying the ordinance to.
Occupancy of those, yeah.
Right, but but if there is an exception built in for people on the waiting list, I think that's it.
Yes, that that's that's the intent. We, we would want to see the conversion take place prior to that, but we don't want to put people who have. Qualified for the waitlist out if if all they're doing is waiting for their their next units to open.
Yeah, okay, and then I I understand that this isn't like a legal non-conforming use in most cases for these properties. But is there any sort of non-conforming status that's going to be available to these SRO operators?
As far as uh continuing to operate as an SRO?
Yeah.
No, the intent is to remove that. Um, it 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 has not met the zoning ordinance and. As I said, my my guess is fifteen to twenty years ago is when we saw a lot of these convert, although I don't know for sure. Uh, uh, unless someone can prove that the that the um. That all of the units within the the motel were. Long-term residential rentals prior to the city's incorporation in ninety-two, we wouldn't be looking at a non-conforming use.
Okay. Thank you.
Just have one more question. Um, are the current property uh owners? Generally in favor of this converging?
Well, uh, I I don't know that any of them are necessarily in favor of it. I do know that uh one of the, one of the motels has already converted a hundred percent. That was the Sleepy Hollow Motel, which is now the Hotel Huga. Uh, they, I hope I pronounced that right. Um, they they converted about two years ago, uh, and they had a little, a few hiccups as they were trying to relocate some of their residents, but they managed to work through that. Uh, the other one I spoke to a couple of years ago was the Farmhouse Motel. Uh, he did not have an issue with it at the time I brought him up. He said that would be great. He he's actually got that property on the market right now. Uh, and there's potential it could be sold as a motel. We speak, we spoke with uh the planning director and I spoke with a potential purchaser here last week whose. Intent is to keep it as a motel, but a short-term rental motel, so. Um, the other two motels are actively renting units in the short term. But they have a few long-term rentals left over, but it's not the bulk of their business, I understand.
Thank you.
And when we talk about the, I have one more as well that that just came to me, but as we talk about the exceptions to those on the waiting list, what waiting list is that, right? Because the Housing Authority has. Regional waitlist, I think, across different parts of the county and there are other projects in progress.
Yeah.
Locally.
So if there, uh, um. What we were looking for were the two projects here in town. Um, if the commission would like to make a recommendation to the council, I I don't don't see a problem with. Uh, allowing an extension uh up to a maximum of, well, let's let's say allowing an extension of residency. If they can provide documentation that they are um, that they've been approved for uh. A unit in a, in a, in an upcoming development. But I would put a limit on that of of six months. If we don't put that limit, uh, you know, let's say July one of twenty-twenty-six. We 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 could be stuck with this for a long time and that conversion may not take place.
Okay. All right, um, that takes us to, we don't have a presentation from a. Any sort of applicant, obviously, the applicant, yeah.
Yeah, city is the applicant.
Great, and then um, we do, it's a public hearing, so we have public comment.
Correct.
Great, so do we have any public commenters? For this item?
No.
Okay. Just double checking, okay, um, any any comments on? Recommendations for the? Council? My, my. I like the recommendation that our city manager gave about a s- a six-month extension of residency. Um, if someone is on a list for. Has pre-qualified on a list for a local project that isn't necessarily in Beelton as well because. There are others that are either close to breaking ground or have broken ground that these families might be. Entering. And I would hate to see. You know, someone out of their home.
I I I agree. I will note though that um. Our recent experience with these types of units is. Uh, many times the developer doesn't start creating this list until they're six months or so out from occupancy. So um, you'd really be looking at projects which are almost ready to open uh by the time we get around to this, so. Um, January first, you'd need some, you'd need waiting lists established and they'd need to provide documentation that they were. They were uh waiting for a unit in that particular uh development, but we can add that and so if there are are uh people that fall into that category. I'll recommend that to the city council if that's your desire.
That would be my personal desire at least.
I'd agree with the comments I had.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I think that wraps it up for for me as well. Um, it's just, I do wonder. How successful. It, the motel operators are going to be. But I I can appreciate the motivation because it and it really does make sense to do this on a systemic level to get these people into permanent housing. It makes sense to me. Um. I. I hope that the outreach is still happening from these organizations.
It it is still happening and will continue to happen uh uh certainly for the two projects moving forward. Uh, I guess I mentioned, one of the developers has already indicated a desire to cooperate. The other one, though they have, we haven't met with them formally, have indicated a similar willingness to to talk to us about this, so.
Okay. Thank you. So that will take us to, we don't have to make a formal motion, then it's just recommendations, so.
Uh, there is a resolution um uh recommending approval that's included in your packet that you would, you. Would want to adopt if that is your recommendation.
Okay, do we have a motion with the recommendation? Made for six months?
I'll move. Accept the resolution with the addition of. The six months and. Can be, did you say out of city?
On a waitlist for a local project?
We we could, I mean, I, you know, again, I I hate to see people out on the street that don't need to be. If someone were to come to us and say, hey, I've got, I've got. A uh, I've already signed the paperwork for a a um, a space in a project in Napomo. Or, you know, uh, Pismo Beach, if they brought us the documentation on that. I I don't know why we wouldn't be able to offer the extension. I again, I would simply, I would put a, I would put a deadline on it so that regardless, we're not waiting for two years. Because somebody happens to be on a waiting list, but they don't have a unit that's been offered, so.
So at least six months and. Even if the application is. Out of city boundary.
Yeah, that's about a year for people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll uh second that motion.
Okay, for the approval of Resolution twenty-five dash oh eight uh with the stated recommendation, Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Aye.
And Chair Reese.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Um, then to any other business for today? None this evening, okay, written communications, none? Any planning commission comments? Do we have any updates from the green team meeting today?
Uh, green team meeting was uh held today, um. The uh. Lynn Flackenstein had some concerns for uh for the city that I'll pass along. Says to.
Great, thank you. Planning Director report?
Sure, so um, you probably have seen in driving by the crossroad center, the Jersey Mike sign that's up uh next to Panda Express, so. Um, that project has um received zoning clearance and they're going through the building. Permit plan check process for the interior tenant improvement, so at this point I don't have an an estimated date of opening. It just depends on. How their process with county building goes, but they are moving forward and do intend to occupy the space in the upcoming future, so. Um, also, I just wanted to mention that we did receive um an approval letter from HCD. Regarding our zoning uh code amendments that are related to the housing element update that we brought to the planning commission some months back. Um, they did send a letter to us saying, hey, you're still certified and we, you know, they've reviewed our, the changes, so that was good to get that letter. And also, um, you're probably already aware, but um, the. Um, Hundred Hills School appeal, appeal hearing with the city council is next week on uh July twenty-fourth, so that'll be going next week. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate those updates, um, and that will take us to adjournment at. At six thirty-five.